Yes. That's why, that's why they. Keep changing things. Yeah.
Sometimes the turf. Turf. Always protect the grass. Sure. No, it's fine. Just all of that. You get far enough protected from the salt.
Yeah, that's a good point. We're lost.
Big trees going down, but.
That spurs kicked in.
It's trouble those days. My heart. The only thing my heart.
They're not four minutes. Can't walk there.
I was going to say, I wore a jacket. I really like your shirt. Three yards, three times here. Second one.
I like that.
I found. Deny them any seeds.
Yeah. How are you? That works, that work, I do that.
What looks like six o'clock if we, everybody is ready? Get this going. All to order the regularly scheduled meeting, Killelag Hill's Board of Commissioners, thank you everyone for being here. Are you doing? I am, I am the public. Plaza public at this. Yeah. Uh, the first order is first to plant a leaf. Plant a leaf. I just. To apply the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is customary, we'll take short moment of silence. Thank you so much. Our members, you received an agenda a few days ago, had some time to review it. If you like what you see, we will be to approve said agenda.
Oh, I moved to approve.
Motion in the second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed name, motion carries unanimously. Have an agenda. First item of business after the agenda is to have public comment. Don't like saying.
None in the night.
Everybody signed up, looks like not. Uh, without close with comments. Our sponsors, kind of short. Uh, any old business. All right, we will jump right into new business, we've got a few appointments to. Look over and make some decisions there. The first item is the Board of Adjustment. The, um. You know, we had Ron Seadman's term expire this month and Tori Dern's term expires in June. Uh, both of them have expressed a desire to be reappointed. So if that is how you all are feeling as well, we're promotion to that direction.
Mayor, I'd move to reappoint both of those, uh, Ron Seadman and Tony Dorn.
Okay, excellent, we have a motion on the floor for these two appointments, so here's a second.
Well, there. I'll second that, but should we add the term of. Well.
You can do it in a separate motion if you want.
Together or separate, whichever works.
Yeah, I, I made the motion for those two because that's how I presented it, and then I figured we'd come back and follow up with all of them.
All right, I'll second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Me opposed, nay. Motion carries for those two appointments. Uh, and like we just alluded to, Mr. Culpeper, Blake Culpeper has been. Got a second from this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next set of appointments we'll look before is the Dangerous Animal Appeals Board. Here, Christine Stafford's term expires this month and Temple is it Inky or Haggie, Haggie? Uh, her term expired. Uh, June of this year as well, both have expressed a desire for reappointment. Thoughts is.
Mayor, I'll move to, uh, reappoint Christine Stafford and Peggy to the position of the. Dangerous Animal Health Board.
Motion on the floor. And the second out of the send, any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Motion carries as well. Third, uh, set here is on the Community Appearance Commission. Uh, we have created recently a new board member position when we eliminated the planning board representative on the CAC. So a motion here, uh, it would be in order to make a free appointment to the Community Appearance Commission that would expire in May of twenty twenty four.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Joe Williams. The CAC has recently applied and had a very strong application. What happened? Excellent.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? She carries, congratulations to that new board member. CAC. All right. Well, the most exciting part of the evening coming up with the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty, that's twenty one, twenty two.
Thank you very much, and it is there at your place for you. It is presented for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, in accordance with the provisions of General Statute one fifty nine thirteen, the governing board shall adopt the budget ordinance. Not earlier than ten days after it's presented and no later than July one. For adopting the budget ordinance, the board will need to hold a public hearing at any time any persons maybe. Wish to be heard on the recommended budget may appear. The hearing may be held at any time after the presentation of the budget. Either prior to or subsequent to the board's work session, additionally, the budget may be adopted at any time and not sooner than ten days after it's presented. Historically, the board has conducted their budget work session prior to the budget public hearing. And if that's the board's desire, I would recommend that you consider holding your work sessions on Wednesday, May the twenty sixth at six P M. Which is the time and date of your second scheduled meeting of this month and hold the budget public hearing Monday, June fourteenth at six P M. And a motion would be in order to schedule the budget work session and the budget public hearing. I'll make a motion to schedule the budget work session for the twenty sixth, for the twenty sixth and the public hearing for June fourteenth.
Motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion about those dates that works for everybody? And hearing no more discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Thank you, and please issue raise the budget if you have any questions, any desire to speak with any of the department heads. With myself or Charlene, please give us a call, we'd love to discuss any issues or concerns or questions you may have prior to our work session.
I always want to dive in and read it right now. Kind of thick, so. Save the Facebook audience, they're watching this stream.
It is a thriller.
It is a thriller, no, I'm really excited to see it, it's probably a tougher year to do a budget than than usual, I mean, you've had a lot of experience, obviously, but.
I don't know, last year's.
Last year was super crazy and this is hard to know where to go as well, so. Hopefully, there were some, some good decisions in there as well, you know, some, some. That sounded bad, you know. You know. I, uh, don't relish having to try to figure all that stuff out before taking a peek at it. All right, well, the next item is committee reports, I know, uh, there's something here, but we're doing that now or later.
Yes, Commissioner Ray has a committee report.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Ready for that?
I'm excited.
You're excited about that?
I read it, it's, uh, it's stuff.
Well, let me, um. Let me start out by saying on the fourteenth, uh, Wednesday, the fourteenth, I was honored and privileged to chair the concluding meeting of the Westside Recreation Group. And it was a pleasure to see the group's plan brainstorm, uh, and a lot of y'all visited, uh, some of our meetings and, uh. You know, you saw the work that went into it and, uh, they have come up with some spectacular ideas that have been passed on to the board commissioners. And true to the charge given by the board commissioners, the group was very focused, efficient, and I don't think I've ever worked with a better group of folks. And, uh, I would like to highlight the outstanding work done by staff members, uh, as well. Uh, and indicate that, uh, to this board, just how great staff did in moving this group along. Uh, my hats off to Mary Quiddly and, uh, Michael O'Dale from the clerk's office, Cameron Ray and Ross, uh, from Plating and Building. And, uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention our resident designer, uh, Steve Albright. Back in twenty eighteen, town clerk Mary Quiddly and myself had an open discussion about what could be happening at Frog Pond. That's how this whole thing started and, uh, you know, I think that, uh. It's come a long way, uh, with some fantastic ideas, we had, uh, regular group members that included Christine Danruse, uh, I hope I get this right. Mallin and, uh, uh, we had Daryl Davies, uh, Will Foxwell. We had our public, uh, that's here tonight, Dylan. And, uh, very, very enthused member on that committee and, uh, uh, he dove into it headfirst. Stacy Hughesman, Kelly Miller, Amy Sayer, Mark Schaefer, I didn't miss anybody. Okay. I've seen each one of them a lot, thank them very much for their contribution to the town and, uh. You know, it's, it's really a pleasure to see this board composition, this new board composition that we have. Everybody seems to be geared up to do things around Frog Pond and so forth, and, uh, I'm really thrilled about that. As far as the recommendations from the group, uh, I'll, I'll get Cameron, I always follow to him and let him explain because he does a much better job than I. And, uh, but, but we finished up, uh, talking about the bomb track. Uh, and we made some recommendations and, uh, without much further ado, I'll let Cameron bring the board up to speed on that.
Will do, thank you, Commissioner Gray. Good introduction to, uh, to what we do as a group with the Westside Recreation Group, it went well and, uh, a lot of good ideas. Um, in front of you tonight is some, a report from our bomb track study. And, uh, we also used Survey Monkey once again to engage the public to get some responses to see what, uh, what the remainder of the public wanted, wanted to see here. Um, this was discussed at our April fourteenth Westside Recreation Group meeting. Most of you are familiar with this site, this is the existing KCR Logan Disc Golf Course, but it's a, a really pristine forty four acre parcel. Uh, along the sound side, so, and, and very close by at Town Hall. These are a couple of the ideas, I'm gonna go through this list pretty quickly and, uh, anybody stop me to ask any questions about it, but this is. This is what the, the Westside Group came up with for additional things I'd like to see the town look at when we go to look at developing this site, you know, down the road. Incorporate the KGH forty four acre Western Bomb Track and the update of the two thousand, two thousand and four recreational plan update. This plan is a, a tool we used and it's not actually listed in that existing rec plan, um, that we have on file currently. Use the most recent study, the Bomb Track Recreation Development, July twenty fourteen, prepared by Consulticon. For facility inventory analysis, maintenance routine and schedule, needs analysis and recommended improvements in preliminary cost estimates. Permanent restrooms adequate to serve the facility and additionally support the Derrick County Sheriff, obstacle course, camp salt and Run Hill State Park. Shoreline access with kayak launch, boardwalk, fishing pier, including a covered gazebo. Incorporate walking trail, greenways within the existing disc golf course, uh, including lookouts for scenic views and benches. Incorporate outdoor education into the park layout. This is kind of similar to what they do in the exit woods, you know, do it, give you some education while you're out there, what, what you're, what, what you're looking at. Incorporate an access road to shoreline for drop off location for paddle sports, turnaround area and emergency service, uh, access. Explore relocating the current mulching operation. To eastern wooded portion between the Derrick County Sheriff's Obstacle Course and Camp Salt and First Flight High School Fields. Explore entrance walkway in association with the planned use development for Bermuda Bay to the east. Install pet waste station. Explore Run Hill State Park entrance trailhead. SISPC review for projects to consider at future meetings to assist with the bomb tract improvements. Connect greenway to multi-use path that connects the first flight schools, aviation park, town hall, Derrick County Parks and Rec, Red Brothers Monument to Centennial Path. Improved parking lot include additional sufficient parking. And improve road from Veterans Drive to the site, I know we've talked about this at past meetings about, um, I think some of the high schools, uh, issues with, with the road also being gravel as it is now, but. Um, certainly could use some. Uh, you know, some parking and some roads and some connectivity for our greenways and, and walking paths. Additionally, create KGH bomb track trailhead parking tree to access side amenities, signage paths, shoreline access, et cetera. Explore outdoor nature center to include an area for outdoor education, restrooms and nature porch, sustainable off grid construction, this was an idea that came out of the, uh. The study that I was done in twenty sixteen, I believe, that kind of a cool idea. And, uh, to, to follow that list, this was a recommendation by the Westside Recreation Group, um, for the items above for the board commissioners' consideration. And staff recommends the board authorize the town manager to incorporate the following improvements into a future master plan, future master conceptual plan for a few, future board review. And, um, be happy to. Talk about that any, any further, but it's, you know, down the road. We go to, uh, to start looking at doing some more things there. Keep these things in mind.
Big picture view and phases like we've talked about in the past.
Yep.
Ambitious big projects down the road, but the basic infrastructure first.
Yeah, and, and it really, there was a lot of, in the public survey, a lot of, um, a lot of people who played disc golf.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're, we're really, you know, excited, seeing a lot of those bathrooms, parking. Um, and then there's a lot of walking trails and shoreline access, you know, uh, interest from the public, so. You know, it's already, it's already well used, but doesn't mean you can't keep to improving, improving that still itself.
Four hundred people in the survey, that's pretty, that's a big sample.
It was.
And that's high, um, on the, um, on the uses in the disco. And, you know, I'll just share my personal feeling aside from the West group, you know, if we're gonna, uh, have these type of facilities, then we have to make sure that. You know, we have restrooms and stuff for the public when they go there, so, uh, you know, that was a, 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 a much welcome. Addition from the Westside Group to, to put that in there, uh, you know, I, I think it's really good, I think updating the recreation plan is, is a biggie to.
On our side.
Yeah, because it's just been so long since it was done, so.
I mean, probably been keeping up with the, uh. Visitors Bureau has been talking about, uh, their next phase of, of what they're doing with the shoreline down to the event site. So they're, they're gonna spend a lot of money on engineers and creative ideas and. Hopefully, there's some ideas that we can, uh, repurpose or.
Yeah.
Be inspired by or, you know, straight up. Because I know they have a lot of the same challenges building in, in their, that's sensitive like that.
You'd be surprised how many people actually have kayaks. And, you know, I've visited somebody, uh, here recently and I said, oh, you got kayak under there? Yeah. And, I mean, they're all, they're all over, but I mentioned it to a couple of neighbors and they said, oh, that'd be great, you know, to have a kayak launch down there, so.
Yeah, there's a, there's a very popular, the old build it and they will come businesses are very true, and you look at the other story of the news this winter. About Nags Head and the sound access that they have down there and the challenges they have with people parking in the neighborhood. That your demand far outstrips the supply of space and that's a pretty decent size access, I know, it's more like a beach than much. Ours would be a different kind of water access, but you're right, there's, there's, the, just to. To be able to jog or do something with a kayak or, or, you know, fishing, I don't know, I don't know if I start fishing, but. Yeah, the site has a ton of potential and. It's good to know that the public is behind us and trying to, uh, grant a little bit more access over time and so we can go. That way, was there any, ever any discussion about public, private partnerships that's? Probably been tipped, turned around, but I see they really make into the, the list there, but certainly something we can go and explore.
Yeah, anything can be, you know, added and, and, uh, you know, adapted to that, uh. And, uh, but, but it wasn't something that was discussed at the Westside Group, but certainly this board can, you know. Throw, throw anything on there that they want, you know, uh, and, uh.
My son started playing disc golf recently, bought some discs, oh, big, exciting, now I'm gonna have to get out there sometimes. He did, he could be a kid. So.
The, the group did have, you know, quite a bit of talk, you know, and, you know, a lot of people don't know Run Hill State Park there exists. And, uh, there's already known as park and what, what would their interest be, you know, in some sort of, you know, trailhead for our park? Uh, and also our neighbors on the other side of Bermuda Bay, would they be interested in maybe, maybe having a, a connecting boardwalk or something along those lines? You know, that's a, that's a good sized development, they may, they may really want that, so.
Right, and maybe other funding sources when it comes to because of those, those, access to those areas, right?
We've been pretty fortunate to have, uh, Cameron, uh, and, and Meredith Spearhead, uh, you know, our brand. Survey and they, they look at all possibilities for funding and, uh, so I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just really ticked to, to have them be able to do that. But like I said, anything is, you know, the board can put anything on there they want, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you've done some great work with, uh, you know, Spearhead and some, some partnerships and, you know, that would be welcome too. It is my.
More years, if you want more ideas we can put together.
Uh, and if, if it's appropriate, I, you know, I'd like to, uh, to make a motion that, uh. The board authorized the town manager to incorporate, uh, the following improvements in a future master conceptual plan for board review. I think that's where we need to go with this, so, uh, I'd like to make that motion, I feel.
Motion, yeah, I'll second that, I'm a second, which means we can discuss it further. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, well, I, I will just add that thank you very much for all the work you did leading that group and, and, uh, thank you for the culmination of this great report. It's always great to bring in so much, uh, community input when it comes to, uh, you know, being opportunities like this and, uh. Thanks for the staff members that have supported them. You get all that.
Very much. And, you know, we'll add that, uh, you know, from talking with the members of that group. The board wants to give them any other challenges they're ready to face that, it's doing it, yeah, right, so.
Keep that in mind, we will, we will not waste that talent that's interested and motivated, yep.
I, I, I would echo that too, I just want to say I was on the original Bomb Track Committee. Talked about this golf, you know, to get more and more, um. People back there, obviously, it's gonna take restaurants, it's gonna take parking and some trails to, to get to that, to the sound spot there, but, um. But, uh, you know, it's, it's certainly exciting and a good use of the area when, when we decided that this golf, golf course there. It was, it was also something that, you know, could be modified and adjusted, not, not taken away, you know, I'm not trying to say that, but. It was, it was really the footprint was such that we could, we could add to that, uh, and bring some people in there, you know, you want to use that. Property in its best use, uh, for everybody in the town, I think that will. You know, connect all of this, if, if there's a way to connect all of this, you know, uh, in more and more ways with the school or some rec, but. You know, make this kind of a center.
More of a destination.
Yeah.
And don't give, we're still looking over the. Conservative.
Right. Right.
So that's definitely worth doing, I've done that and got the whole tour and really some talented folks at the Conservancy over there.
Yeah, I mean.
Get everybody charged up and. See what opportunities it is.
Yeah, examining the fresh pollen and, um, discussion of that, but even, you know, in a way, that vision you have, connect all of that back there anyway. You know, maybe it's not directly connected, but. You know, you could try to try and keep moving all the way from, from one end to the next, it would suck, so.
Yeah, it's interesting when you think big, is we're thinking in the ten or twenty year timeframes that. You go back in time, there were times when this area was first being used as a vacation spot that a lot of development was on the sound side. Came in by boat and, uh. We evolved and evolved and then it was to the ocean beach and now we really led the way in terms of access to the ocean side with more beach accesses than our neighboring municipalities. We have beautiful shoreline to our west that is actually pretty hard to access for most folks unless you, you know, live in certain, certain areas, so. Um, anyways, we kind of unlocked that, um, wonderful community asset in a way that more people can enjoy it, uh, is a noble cause. And, uh, one of the more exciting and fun things about, um, helping steward this town forward in a way that we can all be excited about. So again, thanks for all the hard work and, uh, without further ado, I will call for a vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thanks again for every hard work.
Thank you.
The, the committee did the work, I didn't do it.
And there's, uh, one, one more bit of business from the Westside Group.
Go ahead.
Another topic that was discussed at length, uh, at, at most of our meetings with the Westside Recreation Group was using the Killelag Hills two thousand and four recreational facilities plan. Being that it's year two thousand and four, a lot has changed in recreation and a lot has changed in our existing facilities. Um, they use this as a tool to help guide decisions or, you know, what, what we currently have, um, on what was, what was planned to be improved. A lot of those improvements in that plan have, have been done, um, but they identified the need that that needs to be updated. And also to be updated and incorporate the ideas of the facilities that the Westside Recreation Group, you know, discussed and came up with some recommendations to the board. Um, so that's what, that's what this member is outlining is, uh, you know, an update to this plan will accurately identify our existing recreational facilities. Including their amenities, community needs, recreation trends and, and to incorporate the recommendations of the W, W R G. This will give, you know, the town a, the framework needed to guide improvements and maintenance of existing rec facilities. So what we're asking for tonight, the Westside Recreation Group recommends the board commissioners consider updating the Killelag Hills two thousand and four recreational facilities plan incorporating the recommendations of the W R G for existing.
So really. I can have too much objection to that. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any, any further discussion? We'll say my son was one year old and that. My school, so I think it is probably due. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously, that's a great idea and we know just who to do it, right? So, uh, we have to tell the people, we need to get that, and if, if there is, uh, any net need to bring in a professional, uh, for, you know, uh. What's the word, advice or, you know, technical expertise, that's certainly possible to, I would think, yeah.
We'll report back to the board, yes.
Okay, sounds good, appreciate it. Excellent stuff, so that was the first of committee reports, are there any other?
Commissioner Gray, that's a flawless, sir. Yeah, the Community Appearance Commission, we are on May twenty second at nine o'clock in the morning at Aviation Parks. Uh, we're having a work day for Kick Butt Campaign where we will be, uh, repairing, assembling, putting together new cigarette butt receptacles. We go along our oceanfront and potentially some of our sites along, uh, the sound front as well. Uh, we've gotten the permit from, uh, the local Boy Scouts, uh, troop one sixteen, also the Central Metro Labor out our.
Uh, we've gotten the commitment from, uh, the local Boy Scouts, uh, troop one sixteen, also the Central Metro Labor, we're out our way to help us with all of that, so we're. Pretty excited to be able to partner the community organization like that for this endeavor. And, uh, actually, it's, it's pretty neat that. These cigarette butt receptacles were originally an Eagle Scout project for a scout from. Uh, troop one sixteen, so it was nice to see that, or that idea kind of, uh. Organically their legs and expand other organizations and, you know, continue on and. So, uh, even though it is, it is up to the public, you know, I want to come out and help. Uh, the May twenty second, uh, nine o'clock in the morning at Aviation Park and. We'll work a step afterwards for placement and then we don't, we'll make sure you get on the right poles, right waves, there's always zip ties, it's pretty simple, but, um. And we're having, uh, I believe twenty seventh of May and this room at eight thirty in the morning will be the next week.
Excellent, good, good information. If I can get out there and get some pictures, document that and tell, tell the story to a wider audience, so.
That will be.
Yeah, a great, uh, public information staff too, but, uh, yeah, everybody, that's their little part, it's a word out about great projects like that. Uh, other commissioner or other, um, committee reports, anything from visitor's bureau lately, yeah, alright. Meeting coming up next week, that's right. Alright, um, Mayor's agenda. Proclamation this week, we try to keep everybody safe as we head into the summer season. Um, so I think probably that's why we have so many in the month of May. Um, May fifteenth, uh, is going to be Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May fifteenth, ten through fifteen. As Police Officers Week. Um, we're also going into hurricane preparedness week and beach safety week, so. These, uh, proclamations highlight the importance of everything from our first responders and the role they play. And maintain our communities and protecting all our interests and keeping us safe. Uh, but we also have the role in our coastal environment, keeping that, uh, safe for the upcoming storm season, emergency management director. Our chief, uh, Troy Tilly reminds us that. As we prepare for storm events, even just a visit to the beach is the key to weathering these kinds of storms that often threaten us this time of year as we head into hurricane season. So I recommend approval of these proclamations and a motion or motions would be in order for their adoption. On the screen for the public to.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamations as presented.
Excellent, thank you. Motion at a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, thank you so much for supporting those important proclamations and everybody be safe this summer. Make sure you have your hurricane.
Oh, the commissioner's agenda, do you want to just get back to that?
But another one, I'm sorry. I thought, oh yeah, I went from committee to commissioner, didn't I? Please do, please do, my, that's my fault, I jumped ahead.
Oh, I was just wondering, um, you know, I work right off of Martin Street and it's been such really pleasant and nice to see the improvement of these Martin Street. Um, and it happened real fast, I mean, it, it's construction, it's finished, it was real quick. And now we have some additional side street parking right there, or across the street from the ocean front, I've been there before. So, uh, you know, kudos to staff and everybody. There's one particular member of our team that deserves special, uh, recognition for this, uh, last Tuesday. At one o'clock in the afternoon, I was heading south on twelve and I noticed that. You know, each market just up and back up, beautiful, brand new pavement, just look, couldn't look great, perfect. And it was right when I was getting ready to turn left. Of the most well dressed construction work I've ever seen, literally appeared out of nowhere, jumped in front of my car, waving his hands and said, stop. This is my, this road is brand new, it's too hot, this is my baby, don't mess it up. It was our town engineer, uh, Pete Burkhimer, uh, took it upon himself to. And politely, or by any means necessary, uh, not let people drive, we didn't, there was no penalties.
He was just personally keep letting it set up before it got to the.
I, by my business that we have a, uh, committed. To, uh, take that upon itself, so.
Yeah, I see him out at every project, always up there, keep it a close eye, making sure it's done right.
So, but, uh, overall, great job on these Martin issues, nice to have it.
Yeah, cause it got a little weird there a couple of years ago, I guess there was. Created issues, positive, positive, so, so yeah, it does look beautiful. Well, thank you for that, so I kind of jumped around there, some committee reports kind of blended commissioners' agenda sometime in my mind. Any other items that commissioners would like to bring up?
I just have one, I just wanted to just recognize staff Michael and. Rachel did such a great job with the tree dedication, with doing the, um, dedicating the town tree. And that was a wonderful event, the Community Appearance Commission, um, there were members from that group there and it was a wonderful day, the weather couldn't have been more perfect. And the little trees right up there, I mean, growing, but, and it's, yeah, it looks really good, so. Um, so anyway, it was a, it was a really nice day and, and stopped at one.
Growing, I also like how, reports on how tall it is.
Every year on Arbor Day, take a picture of her next to it, so, yeah, that's our goal, yeah.
Fascinating side story that's totally related to this. When my youngest, my oldest son was on the way, or, yeah, I guess he was born in August. At Arbor Day, I just happened to get some piece of junk mail from the Arbor Day group or whatever that said. You know, send in this card, get a free sapling and they said you like. It's free, I was broke, so I was like, yeah. Bought my first home, you know, right down here, it was the cheapest house on the MLS. Seventy thousand dollars, you can buy a house without back there.
And you can still get saplings from there. They'll send you as many, they'll send you as many as they like.
So, uh, that is really great that we don't have to treat it. We know when it was planted exactly, apparently it likes the soil, like you said, it's grown already, that's awesome. Everything's grown really well this year, a lot of rain, been good. Fantastic, love the feel good stories, any other commissioners?
I was just one item that, uh, you know, this, this board is, uh. Very community minded, um, and I just wanted to applaud Commissioner Windlin. Uh, I pulled up the other day at a, a car wash for the Boy Scouts where they were raising money and he was actually working. I mean, I, I think he, I think he's sweating. You know, that type of, um, commitment from, from the board members as far as the community is, is, you know, I think it's just plausible. So, uh, good show.
Definitely goes around this.
Well, the Cub Scouts is hard to keep the seven, eight, nine year olds committed to. It's enough narrating a lot of the responsibility. Well attended, so.
I washed a lot of cars for the soccer team over the years, it's same deal, it's like herding cats. Um, yes, if we're all trying to be able to communicate, we can, this is, this is great, we've got a great group up here. DJ, you have anything?
Do not.
I know, we, we're glad to have BJ tonight, cause he's got a, uh, kid getting ready for is it the soccer, uh, championships?
That's right, first flight, Manny, there's Manny and middle school soccer championships and it got moved to Wednesday.
It's a big rivalry as well, it's. It's an important game, so, you wouldn't want to miss that, I would say, our most important job is, uh, being a dad first, everything else second.
I appreciate that, yes.
You know, a good community member comes along with the job, right? Alright, so skipping around, pass my agenda back to the town manager's agenda. Okay, and the town attorney's agenda?
Nothing from me, man, board?
Yeah, just looking sharp, double green. Grab another great outfit, I'm a journey, like it. Uh, and the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, consent agenda this evening, the minutes for the April twenty eighth, twenty, um, twenty one meeting. The March twenty twenty one monthly reports actually have two budget amendments, the one in your packet is to increase dumpster sales and associated. Expense due to increase and, um, demand for dumpsters, the one that is not in your packet, um, came together today. With receiving some bids for work on Mecon Steel, um, as you recall. From our discussions with the improvements to, um. Construction, I should say, of the new water tower and, um, the destruction that that caused to Mecon Steel. That there would be a contribution from the water fund, um, in helping for, um, the work at Mecon Steel. Um, so there's a budget amendment that moves that money from the retained earnings in the water fund and then also, um. The remaining money in our recreation reserve, um, we're ready to move that over. Um, these bids will incorporate the, um, the paving, the sidewalk, the grading and also, um, playground equipment. So, we're moving along on this, um, so that would be budget amendment number twenty six. Um, then, um, item number four. In twenty nineteen, the North Carolina General Assembly adopted legislation that reorganized statutes mainly, um, relating to local. Planning and development regulations, the new chapter one sixty D applies to land use regulations while the other. Um, statutes from municipalities remain located in, um, North Carolina General Statute, chapter one sixty A. Planning Director Meredith, um, Guns has attached a memorandum and summary of changes provide an overview of the town code. Sections affected at its meeting on the, um, April twentieth, the planning board reviewed these recommendations and voted to for within. Consideration to the board. What I'm asking this evening is for the board to schedule the amendments affecting chapter one fifty two and one fifty three. For public hearing on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty one at six P M. To schedule a new business item for the May twenty sixth meeting to provide an opportunity for comments and questions on all of the affected ordinances. Adoption of the ordinances would be scheduled for the June fourteenth, um, for the commissioners meeting. An approval of consent agenda will approve staff's recommendation and will schedule the public hearing. And staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented.
Super, we got all that, all the blue, all the blue underlined stuff is new, lots of stuff about. Ethics enforcement, all sorts of things in there, um, I guess you're saying most of that comes from state or it's a combination?
All the changes that you see in the ordinance are changes that were made to the general statutes that we are required to incorporate. Even if you don't incorporate them, they will be effective whether they're in your ordinance or not, starting on July first.
So in a way it's kind of housekeeping really.
It's, it's incorporated, it's, it's bringing us up to code with the statutes, um.
And Meredith worked very closely with our town attorney on this, and he's. Guide this through it, yes.
Hours and hours.
Yes, there's always the references to the other thing and all that, yeah, complicated. So it makes me want to peel my eyelids off.
It's a really good book if you wanna.
Really need to dig it out?
If anybody having insomnia issues, I'll happily lend you my one sixty D guideline book.
See, it'll bring out more public comment than this meeting probably not.
Seemed like there was a lot of, um. A lot of, uh, information about vesting, didn't that change a lot?
Vesting changes tremendously in. A lot of time working out the, the vesting of rights.
Yeah, I mean, I was, um. I was, I was kind of shocked to see all the ending, uh, what was the previous timeframe for vesting?
We have one year in hold with this.
Right, and now it's going to, right?
We had phasing in our ordinance, but it was very up to the board and the statute's got very specific as to how long you could phase, you can't phase forever. Uh, it's got very specific guidelines and when you can use phasing. So there's, there was a lot of, there's a lot of changes apparently, there's been a lot of problems with. Phasing and changing of governing boards and.
Got you.
Things being out there forever and. Under previous ordinances that new boards have changed to try to eliminate that, but this is it out there forever, you know. There, there's, there was a lot of. We didn't have any problems, we've only phased.
Trying to get the streets straight.
Yeah, we've only had one or two projects that have ever been phased in Killable Hills.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I was reading through it, I, I noticed that some of that had changed.
Probably more about Mecklenburg and Wake and the problem, yeah.
I would beg to say that majority of the changes, you can, you can.
Trace it right back to that stuff, yeah.
Sure can.
Things are contentious out there, I don't.
And there was a drive to make, to make, uh, statewide municipal zoning more uniform. And so there's a lot of terms that come in, we don't have conditional use now, it's special use, I mean, it was definitely something that. You could tell the General Assembly was looking to provide some level of uniformity across the state, so.
It's for big business to be all on the same page.
But it also clarified some stuff that make it easier, the gray, the gray, some of the grays gone, which. Enforcement wise does make it quite a bit easier for municipalities to. Regulations, but it was sort of lost over the municipal and vice versa, so. You would point to the county regulations and say, well, it says and then, well, that's not what we're under, we're under this and it doesn't say anything, so. It got rid of a lot of that and, and that is, that's definitely a good thing. Clarified a lot of stuff to make it, so everybody's reading, literally reading off the same page.
Just curiosity question, at the state level, is, is this coming out of the same group that's doing this business about? Who's in charge of trees and who's in charge of multifamily and residential neighbors or is that a different group of people?
This was, I think, I'm not sure how it started, but the school of government took it over, it was, it was assigned to the, the North Carolina School of Government. By the legislature to revise and it took them five years.
It was a long term.
It was a long time and then, the original date for adoption was January first, twenty twenty one. But then the pandemic hit and the, the legislature realized that. A lot of boards weren't meeting and a lot of people were working remotely and made it very difficult to, to get this done, so they extended it to the. July first, twenty twenty one, and that's where we're, that's where we're playing right now.
Gotcha, alright, well, good stuff, we'll, public hearing, public. Shout, probably have anywhere, right, cause it's, it says so, we're, we're just cleaning it up, thanks for all your hard work on that both of you, so appreciate it, I know it's. Takes a while to get your head around a lot of that legal stuff.
We'd approve the consent agenda.
Excellent, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
I'll second that, mayor.
This end, any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just, I wanted to, I was going through the, uh, monthly report.
Yes.
And I, I just a couple of things that, uh, I wanted to bring up in a, a trip, I did my addition correctly. Uh, I wanted to highlight the, uh, fire department, um. And I was looking at the average response time, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I was very impressed with that. The N F P A standard, uh, goal is a five minute, twenty second response time. And, you know, we're killing it, four, four minutes, eight seconds, I mean, the, the fire department is doing an outstanding job. And, uh, I just wanted to highlight that, uh, and I, I have to think that one of the reasons that, that they're doing that. Is because of the, uh, training and so forth that they do, there's a huge increase in the training hours that the fire department's done. And I think that's a good thing, uh, you know, keeps them all up to speed, uh. In, in, you know, I just, I kind of got looking at other departments in here too and, um. You know, the, uh, the police department, you know, they've had a thirty one percent increase in, in dispatch calls. For officer and they're still building with the same people. Uh, so that means they're working harder and doing a great job, so, uh, you know, hats off to you chief on that because. I've, I've been in management and I know how hard it is to keep that bar going, you know, and, and keep the level of service up there. Uh, planning departments, uh. they had, what, nine hundred and fifty um new inspections? Uh, which was about a fifty percent increase uh for them on that. And, you know, they're doing it with the same people. The bottom line is that, you know, I think that we need to tell the town manager that she's doing a great job with her personnel and staff's really doing super for the town. I mean, it's, it's really efficient. Uh, I don't think I've, I've seen it. I've been, I've been on the board a couple of times and I don't think I've seen it quite this efficient in, you know, hats off to you guys. Doing a great, great job. So I I just wanted to bring that.
So we were, further discussion, great points to bring up. Uh, we're still talking about consent agenda. The other comments are ringing up. We'll take a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Public forum? What is our public that two days? Okay, threw me off, public forum versus public. I guess hearing none, we will close public forum and then we're only looking for one more motion than this to adjourn. So, yeah, a motion to adjourn. I'll second that second and a half and all the favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Moment, happy day.
Okay. Super weird year.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely do a little work all the time.
Come on, we're up.
It's like cinnamon first.
Yeah.
Like forever.
I'm so glad I could say that.